All right. Welcome to the special meeting of the Springfield City Council. It is now five o'clock on Monday, December 7th. The purpose of this meeting is to receive information and public testimony regarding the council's consideration of the FY 2021 property tax rate. We, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Gomez.
Present.
Present. Counselor Whitfield?
Present.
Present. Counselor Davila? Absent. Counselor Fenton? Absent. Counselor Curran?
Present.
Present. Counselor Ramos? Absent. Counselor Walsh?
Present.
Present. Counselor Williams?
Present.
Present. Counselor Allen? Absent. Counselor Letterman?
Present.
Present. Counselor Edwards? Absent. Counselor Brown? Absent. Counselor Hurst?
Present. Mr. Allen, we'll start off with your testimony and then we'll move from there to Nancy Creed, and then we'll wrap up with Jay La Torre. So the floor is yours, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate your calling this meeting to order in the presence of many of your colleagues. The purpose of this hearing is to solicit testimony and information relative to the allocation of the tax levy and the setting of the tax rates. And it's my privilege to highlight some of the relevant facts as the council deliberates and prepares to take a vote at the 5:30 meeting. The, this, this vote pertains to the fiscal '21 tax rates. And what I would like to do is share briefly, through the screen share, Patrick would call up the summary of the relevant facts. Okay, just very quickly, counselors, I want to have a framework for everyone to understand. So the valuation date for the fiscal '21 year is January 1st, 2020. So we are always looking retrospectively. The physical status date, which is a local option that was adopted by Springfield back in the mid-'90s, that's, we tax whatever is on the land as of June 30th. We then determine what the, the market conditions were on January 1st for each item that was, each item, each business building, what have you, that's on the land as of June 30th. Payment dates, we've already had a couple passed, the two preliminary dates were August 1st and November 1st, 2020. The actual tax bill would be sent by the end of December and would be payable in two final installments, February 1st and May 1st. Levy ceiling, the levy ceiling is 2.5% of the total taxable value. That total value is 9.4 billion. 2.5% of that is 235.9 million. So that sets a, an absolute limit. The levy limit is simply prior year's levy limit plus 2.5% plus the new growth levy. So our 2.5% increment was 5.4 million. And the, on last year's limit of 216.375, we had 6.7 in new growth. So all those factors combined, we arrive at a limit of 228.5. That's the number we were talking about a week ago. Over the last week, as we understood the council's interest in reducing the levy, the mayor put, proposed that $1 million be taken out of free cash and applied to the levy, which would allow us to reduce the levy, the next factor here, actual amount to be billed, which cannot exceed the levy limit to 227.5. Residential factor, that's what we will ask the council to adopt at the 5:30 meeting. It's a technical term that determines the tax rates and the allocation of the levy. And the proposed factor is .784000, which results in a residential rate of $18.90 and a commercial industrial personal rate of 3923. Any questions on what you see on the screen?
No, it's good.
Okay. Thank you. I, yeah, I thought it would be helpful to kind of, that levy ceiling is a, is a, unfortunately, a phenomenon that we've had to deal with many times over the last three decades. And as we are in the midst of a very strong residential market that's allowing us to avoid a collision with the levy ceiling, but I think that we're likely to approach that within the next couple of years. So that, I just thought it would be helpful to have that. Patrick, if you would remove that document and bring up the, the rate sheet. Appreciate your patience, counselors. Why don't I begin, just to reiterate, the mayor's proposal, which we circulated on Friday afternoon to the council through email and through an announcement, using the residential factor of .784000, that's a residential rate of $18.90. There we are. Thank you, Patrick. And so the mayor's recommendation in the middle of the grid, in blue, $18.90, which is a 63 cent reduction from last year's residential tax rate. And that results in a commercial industrial personal tax rate of $39.23, which is the very same rate for CIP last year. So we, we believe that this is a reasonable balancing of the interests of the homeowners with those of the business community. And we recognize that everyone is facing the challenges of the pandemic and the economic consequences of it. And I'm, I'm proud to present this to the city council as the mayor's recommendation, and I ask your due consideration of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I know many of my colleagues who are on this Zoom or on the previous Zoom that Counselor Whitfield hosted, but if anyone has any questions for Mr. Allen regarding what he has presented, you can raise your hand at this time, and then we'll move on to Ms. Creed. Seeing no hands raised, Ms. Creed, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to all the counselors tonight. I'm Nancy Creed, President of the Springfield Regional Chamber, and I'm here tonight representing the nearly 300 Springfield-based business members and their nearly 40,000 employees. First, I want to thank you for your willingness to hear the voice of business over the years. I know we've had our differences, but I appreciate the time you have taken to listen, to understand. And I especially want to thank you for the rate relief you provided to our business community during last year's rate-setting process. Last year, when I spoke to the council, we, I said that our chamber saw 11 of its members close their doors in the city, citing the cost of doing business and forcing their almost 100 employees onto the unemployment line. Sadly, this year, as a result of the pandemic, those numbers are climbing. Since the pandemic began, we've been polling our businesses to get a sense of the financial impact. Our October numbers indicated that nearly 20% of our small businesses don't think they can survive this. And that was before this current, with the potential for a third. They've had to absorb millions of dollars in unanticipated costs associated with PPE and other health and safety measures, changed their business models just so they could stay open, endured the shutdowns, rollbacks, lost sales, lost customers, penalties associated with the supply chain disruptions, and more. Despite these challenges, they continue to support their employees in the community as best they can, allowing their workers the flexibility to work from home when they can, providing them assistance with childcare, healthcare, transportation, flexible work schedules, PTO, deploying workshare programs, or taking loans to avoid layoffs, donating PPE to the city, its residents, and our frontline workers, supporting our food banks, and providing financial assistance to our struggling nonprofits, just to name a few. They understand what the community is going through, and they understand what our residents are going through. They are our workers, our family, and our friends. The business community cannot succeed without the residents who work for our companies, organizations, and nonprofits, who shop in our stores and who dine in our restaurants. Residents cannot succeed without the jobs, tax dollars, and charitable giving from our business community. During this unprecedented crisis, we must all come together to move our city forward. It is in that vein that the chamber is supportive of the mayor's residential factor and that, which we also supported at the tax rate advisory committee meeting. And we hope that you, the city council, will agree as well. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I hope you each have a safe holiday season.
Thank you, Ms. Creed. Are there any questions or comments for either Ms. Creed or Mr. Allen from the council? Seeing none, we will stand adjourned until our 5:30 meeting, where we will vote on the special tax rate. Thank you all. Okay, so with that said, we will get started. Are we ready to go, Brendan?
Yes, we are, sir.
Okay, welcome to the special meeting of the Springfield City Council. It is now 5:30 on Monday, December 7th. The purpose of this meeting is to set the residential factor for 2021. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Gomez?
Present.
Present. Counselor Whitfield?
Present.
Present. Counselor Davila?
Present.
Present. Counselor Fenton?
Present.
Present. Counselor Curran?
Present.
Present. Counselor Ramos?
Present.
Present. Counselor Walsh?
Present.
Present. Counselor Williams?
Present.
Present. Counselor Allen?
Present.
Present. Counselor Letterman?
Present.
Present. Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Present. Counselor Brown? Absent. Counselor Hurst?
Present. Will the council and our guests please rise for a moment of silence? Will you please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and divisible with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first item on the agenda?
The first item on the agenda is an order for supplemental budget decrease in state aid.
Thank you. Is there anyone present to speak to this order? Please state your name and address for the record.
President TJ Plant, CAFO for the City of Springfield. Right now, what we're asking is to do update the supplemental budget for the school department. They, their number has been revised based upon, originally, the estimate that the school department used was a 15.7 million more, because they used the governor's House One number back in January. That's since been revised, and even after we filed this, the Senate and the House had their conference committee and agreed to get a different number that we'll have to bring back to the city council at some point in the near future. But this is just to set the, the, in order to set the tax rate, we need to have this, this amount as a supplemental budget.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this order?
I have a question.
Um, Counselor Allen?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. So TJ, I know you said that they stuck with the governor's number from early in the year. So the implication of the amount being smaller or eliminating the 15 million or so of revenue, they, the school department, do we have any other action we have to take, or is that all in the school?
No, so, so, great question. So when I go from here, is the city council just sets the, the number as required. The school department has been preparing for this. They had contingency plans built into their budget process in the event that the state was not going to fund the Student Opportunity Act that they were hopeful to get back in January. As you know, everything's changed since COVID. So this is just to line it up with what the governor's recommendation was back when he refiled his budget with the legislature back in October. And that's why we're asking to do it now. And then the conference committee just came out with a roughly $1.8 million difference to the good for the school department and the charter reimbursement, but we didn't have that information by the time we filed this one.
So we, if we set this supplemental budget, the, the rest of the action is on the school department to respond?
Yeah, so once, once this is passed, the school department will, they'll bring the revised budget to the school committee for a formal vote in, later in December.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, TJ. Just so that I'm clear, so we are getting 15 million less from the state, correct?
Correct.
In turn, that means that the school committee may possibly get 15 million less, or they're going to make adjustments thereof?
So they have been planning to make the adjustments in the event that they didn't get this Opportunity Act funding. So this will not, the reduction will not impact services at the school department. So this is just to make sure that our, our books are, are accurate when it's in the tax rate.
So it's fair to say that they might experience a reduction themselves, but we don't know how much?
So, yeah, so they're receiving a reduction of 15.7 million dollars as what they have, but that was new money that they did not have.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Or even earmarked, so they, they have, they don't, they, they don't need it, because I always say they're going to need additional, but this was part of their planning all along, the off-chance that they're going to have state aid reduced.
Right. TJ, I thought that they said that we're going to be level funding for the next year.
So this reduction reflects level funding plus cost of living for Chapter 7.
Okay.
They do a CPI tied to level funding, and so that's what they're, that's what this number reflects.
Okay, and the, the tax rate that was suggested to, that reflects this new change?
Correct.
Okay. Now, my final question, would you be able to look at your crystal ball and take a, well, guess for the next cycle?
For?
Any reduction for the state?
So, I'd stop to, it's tough to say. They did level fund Chapter 70 plus CPI for schools, and then they level funded our unrestricted general government aid. They did use a lot of the state's reserves to do this. So my, my hope is that we'll get level funded again, but my understanding is that I'm not, this year is a hold-on year while we try to figure things out to get through the pandemic. Fiscal '22 and fiscal '23 are going to be challenging fiscal years going forward.
All right. Thank you, TJ. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. If there are no further questions or comments from the council regarding this order, this requires a two-thirds roll call vote for passage. Madam Clerk, can you please acknowledge Counselor Brown prior to us taking this vote?
Counselor Brown?
Present.
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can you please call the roll on this order?
On accepting the order, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Allen?
Uh, yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on suspending Rule 19 to take this order up in one vote?
On the suspension of Rule 19, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. The order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a transfer FY '20 certified free cash to FY '21 estimated revenue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Thank you, Mr. President. TJ Plant, CAFO. So this item is the amount that we're going to be putting under the tax recap to further reduce taxes, and this is certified free cash. The city just certified 7.3 million in free cash last week, and we're putting a million towards the tax rate at tonight's vote.
Thank you. TJ, are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this order? Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. TJ, just to be clear, as I'm learning accountant, so we're taking a million dollar out of the free cash, and to what account is that going to go to?
It goes into estimated revenue that'll be put in, filed in the tax recap after a residential factor is adopted in tonight's meeting.
Oh, we can, okay. All right. Thank you, TJ.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Are there any other questions or comments from the council regarding this order? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on accepting this order? This requires a two-thirds roll call vote from the council for passage.
On accepting the order, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on suspending Rule 19 to take this order up in one vote?
On the suspension of Rule 19, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. The order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is for the tax factor for FY '21.
Thank you. Is there anyone present to speak to this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. President and honorable counselors, Richard Allen, 94 Pondview Drive. I'm the chairman of the Board of Assessors for the City of Springfield.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
I would ask Patrick to share on the screen a document that I introduced at the last hearing. For the benefit of counselors who are not able to attend the five o'clock public hearing, I would just like to quickly describe some of the critical facts and, and concepts involved with property taxes. So our valuation date, I would just note, it's pursuant to state law. It's required by state law that we use a valuation date of January 1st, 2020. I'm sure you'll hear from constituents and property owners about how values have changed. This is a date that's prior to the pandemic taking hold. Next year's taxes will be based on January 1, 2021. So please be mindful of that, that date. The physical status date, which was adopted by the City of Springfield back in the mid- 1990s, it's a local option. We use the physical status date of June 30th, whatever is on the land as of June 30th. We then treat that as, as though it's standing in the market conditions as of January 1st. Payment dates, we've had a couple of payment dates pass. Preliminary taxes were due August 1 and November 1. And this vote this evening would allow us to mail bills by, by the end of December, which would result in the actual tax bill being distributed across two installments, February 1st and May 1st of next year. I'd like to just discuss for a minute the distinctions between the levy ceiling, levy limit, and the actual levy. So the, the levy ceiling is 2.5% of the total taxable value in our city. This is what's used statewide for all cities and towns to comply with Proposition 2.5 and state law. And essentially, our total value in Springfield, total taxable value, is 9.4 billion. You multiply that number by 2.5%, you arrive at 235.9 million, which sets a, a level of taxation which we could not exceed. The levy limit is, is something different. That's the annual calculation again. It's the prior year's levy limit. Last year's levy limit was 216.375 million. We take that number, add 2.5% of that number, and then we, which was 5.4 million, and then we add the new growth levy, which was certified a couple of weeks ago by the Department of Revenue, that new growth levy is 6.7 mil. Those three components, come, come, components combined are what we call the levy limit, and that is 228.5 million. The levy limit cannot exceed the levy ceiling. The actual levy is the total amount that we will be billing, and again, that has, that cannot exceed the levy limit. Typically, we are assessing close to the levy limit on an annual basis this year. It's something different with the $1 million that you just approved from free cash to be applied to the, to the actual levy. The actual levy is, is 1 million less than the limit. So we're at 227.5 million. The residential factor is a technical term, and that's what you'll be adopting in a few minutes, a residential factor, which determines the tax rates and how the levy of 227.5 million is allocated to the classes of property. Finally, the proposed residential factor this year is .784000. That would result in a residential rate of $18.90 and a commercial industrial personal rate of $39.23. So thank you for your attention. Are there any questions on, on anything on the screen at the moment?
Sorry. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding anything that Mr. Allen has presented thus far? Counselor Whitfield, did you have your hand up?
I mean, it was, it wasn't for this, but I, I would like to comment on the work that Richie's done. He's called me like- I mean, it was it wasn't for this, but I I would like to comment um on the work that Richie's done. He's called me like 50,000 times. No, he called me quite a few times to make sure that the information was clear, and I appreciate that, Richie. Um, he listened to all the concerns that we as a council have had, and he actually reached out to make sure we got the meeting set and make sure we have all last year's information. Has been very thorough in the process. So Richie, I just want to thank you for explaining this because I think I've been misspeaking saying we're setting the residential rate when we're actually setting the residential factor, which determines the rate. And so I just want to say thank you for this presentation and thank you for um your thoroughness with the process.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield. I believe there is one more sheet that you wanted to speak to. Uh, Mr. Allen, is that accurate?
Yes, it is, Mr. President.
Okay, so why don't we get to that sheet in the interest of time, and then we'll open the floor up for questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, so this is our our rate sheet. Every line on the grid here represents an option available to the city council. Um, the the highest rate would be the $24.11. That would be if all property were taxed at the same rate, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial, personal, uh that would result in a rate of $24.11. That's the highest uh the residential would go. As you come down that screen, or excuse me, that column, uh 1953, that was last year's residential rate. And we highlight last year's commercial, industrial, personal shift, yeah, in the yellow highlighting, 1.583. And uh finally, we come down to the mayor's recommendation in blue, which would be for the residential factor of .784000, which results in a residential rate of $18.90, which is a 63 cent reduction from last year's residential rate. Be the lowest residential rate since 2009. And it also results in a commercial, industrial, personal rate of 3923, which is the very same rate as last year. So we think, again, we think this represents a uh a responsible balancing of the concerns and interests of the homeowners with those of the business community, and I urge your diligent consideration of that.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield. I see you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say to um the administration and to the mayor, thank you for listening to the concerns of the council and um allowing a million dollars of free cash to be used to give some relief to the residents in the City of Springfield. I also want to say thank you for the hard work and commitment and the meetings that you all had and your open door policy because we were able to call every single one of you to get the information that we needed. And so I definitely um appreciate that. And I want to say we've had numerous meetings in a short amount of time about the residential tax factor and the subcommittee um unanimously, well, not unanimously because we weren't all there, but um we had a majority vote on accepting the tax factor. And so I hope that the council will follow suit and accept the tax factor, given the relief to the residents. I wish that there was no increase to the bills because we know that we still are struggling during COVID time, but some relief is better than none. And hopefully, as Counsel Walsh and Hurst said in the previous in the previous subcommittee meeting, we can find other creative ways to um give even more relief and support to the residents. And then I just want to lastly thank um Nancy Creed for speaking on behalf of the businesses and understanding um the needs and um having the CIP should be a little bit higher than it was last year for the businesses, but um thank you for understanding and always being supportive and and agreeing to be on the committee along with Freddie Lopez. Um, we definitely thank you for your support. And Michelle, she couldn't be here today, but I just wanted to thank everyone who um served on the committee as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield, Counsel Walsh, followed by Counsel Letterman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I certainly want to add my uh my congratulations and support to uh the members of the council. I know this is, having chaired this committee, this is a very difficult committee to chair. You know, it's a vote we take that impacts almost all of our constituents, and I think it's a, I don't know about being on president, but I'm I'm sure that this has been uh a work that the mayor, the council, and the business community have come together, and that doesn't always happen. So I want to thank you for making a presentation that takes into account the difficulties that so many people are facing this year that I don't think last year when we set the tax rate, anybody could have anticipated what we would be facing in 2020. And thank you, Counsel Whitfield, for alluding to the fact that Counsel President, myself, and Richie Allen have talked a little bit about at some point doing a little more to provide relief for people impacted by COVID. I don't think it's a vote we can take up tonight. I think it's something that Counsel Gomez, maybe uh when you get to Boston in January, you you can lead us on, but I would really like to see more COVID relief. And I think uh it's unusual and very happy that all of the parties have come together to agree on this rate, and I'm going to vote for it tonight.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh, Counsel Letterman, followed by Counsel Davila.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, just a one question for uh folks who might be watching at home uh and also for my own information on the for the assessor. On the rate sheet relative to the mayor's recommended rate with the 63 cent reduction on the residential side, what what is the anticipated average uh bill going to look like in the city?
Thank you for the question, Counsel Letterman. Um, well, assessors are focused on value and um there's a a variety of of changes across the city depending upon selling activity in in various neighborhoods. So it, there's quite a uh a variety of of changes. Um, but when we we often speak of the average single-family bill, uh last year's average single-family value was 161,000. This year, it's 172,900. And on that, on that value last year, uh the the average, the the bill was $3,144. Uh, under this proposal this evening, uh that average bill would would rise to $3,267, so about a $123 increase. But I want to caution everyone that there are many hu- many houses, one, two, and three family homes, which are lower than that, and many that are higher than that. It just, it's really a function of value within the immediate neighborhood, within the the larger neighborhood, um in style and age and condition of properties. We do a very detailed study of all the sales, uh all the market sales that occur throughout the city, and uh we have to meet uh rigorous statistical requirements of the Department of Revenue in order to get the values approved. So we've I'm pleased that we're in compliance again, but I I just want to caution you that there are a a a wide spectrum of of uh bill changes, both uh decreases, increases.
Thank you, Mr. Assessor. And perhaps after this meeting this week, um in the past, you've been able to provide, or your office has been able to provide a some data on that, once the factor is set, that can show us the sort of number of homes and and where the different values put them and how many are going to be falling into uh different averages. So if you at some point could get that to us, it would be appreciated. I I do plan to support the recommendation from the Finance Committee and from uh the mayor, and I agree with Counsel Walsh that, you know, everybody has worked together to try to come to you know, really a proposal that is able to meet our our financial obligations and also take into account uh the the times that we are in. Um, I want to talk just for a moment, and I I spoke about this in the Finance Committee as well, about the times that we are headed into. Uh, you know, we're certainly rounding the corner on the pandemic, uh but we also know that we're going to be heading into uh some increasingly tough economic times as we head towards what is hopefully a robust recovery, but one that will take some time. And the assessor mentioned uh the valuations coming by January 1 of 2020 being the values that we are basing these bills on. Uh, but next year, we will be back here uh getting ready to set rates relative to the bills uh that are assessed for January 1, 2021, and that will take into account uh this very wild real estate market that we're currently encountering. And so I just think we need to have a long-term view as we make our financial moves in the coming year to avoid any uh big increases uh and and spikes uh relative both to increased evaluations in the future and also the fact that we're using uh this million dollars in free cash that we just approved to offset uh some of that increase this year. I think uh being able for homeowners and business owners to be able to predict these types of things is important. And so uh some continuity needs to be taken into account. And just the second piece I would add um is relative to making residents aware of the relief that does exist for certain tax classifications, um including the the circuit breaker that we've discussed at length and the different residential statutory abatements. Uh, we had discussed the possibility of putting an insert into the next round of bills uh that would give some guidance for individuals as to how they can take advantage of those programs and hopefully maybe increase uh that percentage as well. And I have had some information since then that if we're going to do that, we need to move fairly quickly on it. So I hope that tomorrow uh we can have some conversations with the necessary individuals so that residents will have some more guidance uh than they might have had in the past in terms of uh relief that might be available for for certain aspects. And of course, to Counsel Walsh's point, uh there's more that needs to be done on that. But for what is available now, people should be aware of it.
Thank you, Counsel Letterman, Counsel Davila, followed by Counsel Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Followed by Counsel Gomez, my apologies.
No problem. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Richie, and to everybody in the administration's team, thank you for for doing such a a a um diligent job uh of figuring the tax factor. I know it's, we're going through some, or will be going through some challenging times. So that I understand that those at home are who are watching also understand it. The proposed mayor's recommendations, 1890 residential, 3923 for businesses, plus the $1 million in tax relief. Richie, what the $1 million tax relief, what, how much would that translate for the average person?
So the, well, the 1890 and the 3923 are a consequence of that um $1 million being applied to the levy. Uh, so it's not an additional savings, it's
consequence, okay.
Just to clarify.
So it's not like they're going to see a credit on the tax bill?
No, no, there the 1890 is the is the rate, um and the each bill will have a value on it, and uh the residential bills will be calculated at the 1890 rate and the commercial, industrial, and personal bills at the 3923 rate. Independent of that uh uh million dollars being applied, um the uh the increase on the uh on the on the residential bills would have been based on uh a residential tax rate of uh $19.04. So um it's just important to understand that that million dollars is reducing that that residential rate.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification because I I was a little not clear myself. Uh, Richie, I I I think it's I'm obliged to ask this question. Uh, there was, actually, maybe TJ, if TJ is on the call, Mr. President, he could address the question as well. The $1 million is a good start. And as I think, as I sit here, I think back, uh when we were talking about the water and sewer, uh the council, some of the councils made a recommendation, we'll do the same thing, some sort of relief for the water and sewer. Uh, I'm just wondering, uh, at the time that the administration was not open to that, I'm just trying to think, what has changed that we are able, although I'm glad that we're doing this, I'm just trying to grasp what has changed that we're doing this relief?
So Counsel, I guess that's the question. Uh, really what has changed was the council and the mayor's desire to try to hold down um residential taxes to the extent that we could have some positive impact on it. Though values are growing, so we knew that the values, you know, so we wanted to provide some relief. And a million dollars, we just certified 7.3 million in free cash, and a million dollars is what I was comfortable with uh recommending to the mayor to have the corresponding statements that Chairman Allen spoke about uh to bring down the rate down to 1890. So that I's, I think it's basically responsible to do. I think beyond 1 million, it gets a little more challenging. Uh, you guys have a lot of votes coming up tonight, but moving money. Uh, we have, we want to keep our stabilization reserves as high as we can heading into these lean years. I think it was a nice balance um with everybody involved kind of coming together on this one.
All right, fair enough, TJ. Thank you. And my last question, um, if I could, Mr. President, I was just uh looking at emails that I believe all of them have gotten from a local business uh who is concerned that the city is using, I believe, a third party to to send out the bills or to actually do the assessment. Is that correct, Richie? They claim that they were
So that
overinflated from uh by four times the actual value without no growth?
So if I might just clarify, um, so that email refers to a uh a third-party vendor. And it's common practice uh for assessing offices to use a an outside vendor for personal property fieldwork. And uh, so that that same business that's re- that does uh imply there, uh they they are very active in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They do a lot of work. We've used them for about 20 years. And uh, uh, they assist us with the field data collection. And we try to get to every account, have them get to every account uh at least once every five years. Um, so um, so that's a, uh, yes, we use an outside firm to to perform that work.
Okay, and just uh what caught my eye was apparently the overvalue. How do we monitor that?
Yeah, so I, uh, overvalue applications are confidential. They're protected by state law, so I cannot discuss anything pertaining to a specific overvalue.
Right, uh, but can you at least give me a quick overview how we, if somebody thinks they were overvalued by a business, uh what can they do and what can they talk?
A very short overview, Mr. Allen, as we knew you could give a public speak out as well.
Thank you. Uh, they file an abatement application, and if they're dissatisfied with the uh decision of the Board of Assessors, they then file an appeal to the State Appellate Tax Board, which allows the Board of Assessors to continue to address the application.
All right, thank you, Richie. I think it was, President.
Thank you, Counsel Allen, Counsel Gomez, followed by Counsel Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is going to be quick and brief. I just uh, you know, everybody's thanking everyone. Uh, and there's one person I think that uh deserves a lot of a hand and 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 a lot of thanks is because she, uh, Madam Chair, uh was exemplary. I think she uh held herself tight to uh conducting herself with great professionalism in each meeting, making sure everybody's voice was heard. And I think under her leadership, I think uh my hat tips off to her, making sure that a lot of this information, usually, we have a lot of, you know, I've I've been around for only five years, but uh to me, regardless of how, you know, the stresses and strains that we've been trying to figure out how we're going to better serve our constituency, the meetings were ran very well, and I think uh under her leadership, uh, you know, she should be very proud, and and I'm thankful that um I I was part of the, I have to ask a question because most of the questions and things ran very smoothly. So I just want to give her under her leadership that out of finance, I I'm very proud to be have been part of that subcommittee and uh been been proud of her. So for that, thank you, Counsel Whitfield.
Thank you, Counsel Gomez, Counsel Ramos.
Mr. President, I just have one request of uh Richie. If you can, please, um, at some point this week, um, send the council an email uh list of how people can how homeowners can request either an abatement and any other option that they have to ask for any sort of reduction on the property taxes. That would be really helpful for us to share with our constituents.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Ramos, and I think there are a number of counselors who have asked for that, including myself, uh, Mr. Allen, so I certainly look forward to that. Uh, and seeing no further questions.
Message received.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, and seeing no further questions from the council, I just want to give Ms. Creed an opportunity just to say a few words if she is on this um on this call, as I, I think it might be important. as I think it might be important for the body to hear her thoughts from a business standpoint.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate that. We are in support of the residential rate factor. We recognize the challenges that all of our residents are faced with at this point. The small business community are faced with similar challenges, but we appreciate what others are going through. And so we are supportive of the recommendation for the residential factor.
Thank you, Ms. Creed. And I just saw in the chat, Mr. Freddie Lopez, are you on this call as well? And did you want to say a few words? And we appreciate you for serving on the committee as well.
I believe he signed off, sir.
Oh, he signed off.
No, I'm here if you can hear me.
Okay, back up. He's here.
Okay, so, yeah, I just wanted to say that I hear a lot of counselors asking, when will we
You're breaking up a bit, Mr. Lopez.
For our businesses as well.
Freddie, can you adjust your mic so that we can hear you? Okay, with that being said, Madam Clerk, unless we get Freddie back, do we need to make an amendment to this tax factor as I do not see one set? And if so, can you let us know what that amendment is?
Yes, I need a motion to amend the order to add the tax factor, the actual numbers to that last line. With a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
So motion made by Counselor Ramos, seconded by Counselor Whitfield. Madam Clerk, this requires a roll call, majority vote for passage.
That was made by Counselor Gomez, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seconded by Counselor Gomez. Or I'm sorry, it was seconded, but the motion was made by Counselor Gomez, seconded by Counselor Whitfield. My apologies. We haven't even started our regular meeting yet.
Counselor Gomez, can you state the factor for me in numbers, please?
I have to pull it up. So the factor is, what is it, .78?
84.
Okay, so I want a motion that we set the factor to .784, which the evaluate of what residential was 18 point. Mr. Assessor, can you help me with the
1890 and 3923.
1890, 20, say that again.
3923.
3923.
There's a motion made by Counselor Gomez, Counselor Whitfield. Can you second that again?
Second again.
Seconded by Counselor Whitfield. Madam Clerk, can we please call the roll on accepting the tax factor? This requires a roll call, majority vote for passage.
On accepting the factor. Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is on the motion to amend. Madam Clerk.
Yes, on the motion to amend. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on approving the tax factor?
On approving the tax factor. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. The tax factor has been approved. Counselors, if we could please log out of this meeting and then log on to our public speak-out link so that we can hear from one individual who has signed up to speak. It would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, and thank you for everyone for their hard work.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.